Recording in progress.
We started the meeting early this morning, or this evening, at 5:00. So we already opened the meeting and had an executive session. So we're going to pick up with item number six, the Board of Education Spotlight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to share. First of all, I want to say thank you. It's nice to see everybody with masks off and smiling faces. And welcome to our board meeting. So thank you. We have nineteen C.W. Baker High School students and four Dirby Junior High School students recently earned the CNYS Classic Art Awards. Combined, the students earned thirty-four Gold Keys, Silver Keys, and Honorable Mention Awards in Photography, Sculpture, Mixed Media, Design, and Drawing and Painting. The CNYS Classic Art Awards, sponsored by M&amp;T Bank and hosted by Anadaga Community College, has honored students, artists for more than seventy years. So if students that are present, could you please come up into the front here? And we will give you your certificate and we'll do a photo. And what I would like to recognize those students at the time. Gabriella Locker, Sidney McKenny, Kaitlyn Sacco, Jonathan Savage, excuse me, Joan Savage, Kalen Barberi, Brennan Lacy, Katrina McCartney, Olivia Van Buren.
All of you who Superintendent Tossin' is named, feel free to come on up here to the front. Don't be shy. Come on.
We don't fight very hard, anyway. Olivia Van Buren, Jack Wasuluk, Emily Atkins-Snow, Katie Aclair, Lily Bike, Sophia Cavallieri, Aiden DeBois, Haley Grower-Gower, excuse me, Rihanna Kennedy, Grace Lee, Lane Macnick, Sarah Odell, Sophia Prokia, Hannah Salvini, Maya Tezzi, and Giovanni Vezcas. And I apologize if I didn't pronounce any of those correctly, or if I pronounced them incorrect. But sincere heartfelt congratulations to all of you.
Gabriella Locker. Sidney? Sidney on here. Kaitlyn Sacco.
Okay.
Joan. Kalen. Rihanna. Rihanna? Sorry. Katrina. Olivia. Jack. Emily. Katie. Lily. Sophia. Aiden. Haley. Rihanna. Grace. Lane. Sarah. Sophia. Hannah. Maya. Giovanna. All right, so if you all can just take your certificates out. And if you would like to join the paper. And then I'm going to take individual pictures from all of you. If I pull that away? All right. So kind of, if you're a little bit shorter, come towards me until I let it talk over there. And then we'll just squeeze that. You're in the back. All right, we're going to hold up next to something again. Perfect. That's great. Perfect. So don't leave anywhere after the video. Come on the hallway to my seat. Thank you. Yes, we'll do a redo. Was there any other students who came in a little late? No?
Yeah, one more.
One more?
There you go. Get out right in there.
Hi, what's your name? Lily. So we just hold up next to something, okay? One more to count. You can take it right out of there. Any more? Perfect. Everyone look here and I can actually say smile now. Thank you.
Great job, Gabrielle.
Moving on to the next portion of the meeting. This is Correspondence Board Activity and Committee Reports. And on Thursday, February seventeenth, we had our Wellness Committee meeting. And I was able to attend that. We discussed the WELLSET 3.0 results, which were shared. That assesses the strength of our district wellness policy in different areas. And it was used to rework the policy in a draft and revise policy to share. This will eventually move forward to the Board Policy Committee for review and share in first reading at a future meeting. We also discussed the WELLSET I, and that's to be completed for each building to assess all the wellness practices that each building has. We discussed the Employee Wellness Inquiry and to get ideas for future wellness programming for the staff. We also discussed what was going to happen on PDC Day. There's going to be inspiration card and some apples for all the staff. And they discussed a twenty-day Wellness Challenge that which will be added to the Wellness Google Classroom. And then they also gave an update for the county grant that we received. And the county be working with Reynolds to start working on an indoor walking trail or exercise stations. And also Brian Wright from Food Service also is able to secure funds and support TVs on the cafeteria line of a baker. And the employees will get some training to use them. And then on March third, we had building tours for Baker and Ray. If any would like to discuss anything that they learned on the tour.
I was able to attend both the tours of Baker and Hannah Ray and Mr. Denton and some staff guided us through. The cafe and the cafeteria were nice new additions to the building. And the cafe, I'm hearing, is getting a lot of customers throughout the day. There were some classrooms that are in need of some repair with some flooring that we went over. And it is positive for myself, not having been through the high school yet, was there were two rooms that were really up to date. One being the radio, the radio room, studio. And then there's a classroom that is set up lecture style. And I just thought that was a really great addition to have at school for the kids who are higher education and will be sitting in those type of lecture halls. And as far as Ray, Christina Morgan and her staff, and also Rick. Rick was also with Facilities around with us as well. Learned that Ray has basement. I guess that might be a new board member thing, but that was pretty interesting. Storage takes place down there. And Christina showed us some things that need to be worked on for improvements. And so overall, it was a nice opportunity. So thank you to those individuals who liked those tours.
And I'd just like to second that. I think that both tours, they gave us an opportunity to walk through the schools and to see the different classrooms, the different styles of the way things are set up. But it also gave us a chance to see things that need adjustment. Things that we might need to work on with our next projects coming up to make sure we get everything to the right standards. But both schools, both tours were excellent. They were excellent, and I thank you guys.
Thanks, guys. Anyone else have anything else to say about the tours? Does anyone else have anything you want to share, something, school events, or anything they've attended since we were last together? All right, we have some upcoming meetings and events on Thursday. This week we'll have a DEI Committee meeting. On the fourteenth, we're going to have a BTA Board of Ed and Cabinet meeting. And following that, we'll have a Board of Ed Retreat. On the fifteenth, we have a Additional Policy Committee meeting added to the schedule. And then on Friday, March eighteenth, it's a half-day K through five for parent-teacher conferences. And then the board will also have an opportunity to tour all five elementary schools, for the same reason that Brian shared with us, going to the upper-level buildings last week. And on the twenty-third, we have a Facilities Committee meeting prior to our next regular Education, Board of Education meeting. And then on the twenty-third, we also have a Technology Committee meeting. Okay, next up, we have the Student Report. So I'll hand it over to Kaylee Evans.
Thank you. The past few weeks, as well as the upcoming week, have been and will be very eventful for students. Our pup band performed at SUNY Cortland. We played a doubleheader basketball game and then the Women's Basketball Championships. We also played at the Beeville Hockey Game versus West Genesee and the Beeville versus CNS Women's Basketball Game, which was this past Saturday at OCC. These events were super exciting and our teams pushed through. Beeville's Winter Garden Indoor Drum Line recently competed in Homer. I got to attend these events as well, and they were incredible to watch. This Wednesday, there will be a seventh through ninth grade band concert with a guest appearance from our pup band. And there is also an all-district Disney-themed choral concert on the fifteenth and sixteenth. Positivity Project Spirit Week is next week, including a Green Day for St. Patrick's Day and a Beeville Pride Day. Planning has begun for KBR's Senior Celebration, Baker's Culture Festival, and Acceptance Coalition's Second Annual Beeville Pride Walk. And the Bonzo Marching Band will be performing in this year's St. Patrick's Day Parade. This is especially exciting because the Syracuse St. Patrick's Day Parade is an annual tradition for our marching band. And the parade was canceled last year due to COVID. Speaking of which, as of last Wednesday, the mask mandate was lifted at school and staff and students now follow a mask choice policy. Administration and teachers have encouraged students to respect each other's choice to wear or to not wear a mask. Administration has also addressed the situation between Russia and Ukraine, offering support from counselors for students who need it. And many teachers and staff have worn Ukraine pins handmade by Mrs. Hill to show their support for Ukraine. Overall, it's a busy time in our school district and in the world around us. We're just halfway through the third marking period and getting closer and closer to the end of the school year and graduation for our seniors.
Thank you, Kaylee. Next up, we have Public Comments and Request a Speak. Are there any tonight, Kim?
No.
So moving on to item number nine, Consent Agenda Result. The Board of Education approved the Consent Agenda pursuant to its attached. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first, Matt second, I think. All in favor? Opposed? Pass is eight-zero. Next up, we have the Board Reports. First up will be Facilities Budget. So Mr. Council, how do you take over?
Yes, please, thank you. Kim and Rick? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Just minor changes from the last time we were up here. There was a contractual change in salaries due to BAPAS signing their contract. So that changed a little bit. And then our BOSEs, we had some slight changes with that. So the salaries increased $209, like I said, just due contractually. And then BOSEs, the gas-electric account, went down $371. And the gas-electric low-meter BOSEs went down $21. So very minor changes since the last time. Were there any other questions?
I don't remember if fuel or anything's in here, but are you making any adjustments due to all the recent increases?
We do have gas, fuel. We had that $30,000, which was the same as last year.
Okay. We do work through BOSEs for some of those things. So hopefully that helps us avoid some of those major, you know, significant increases. But we do build our budgets here with enough fund balance that if we do need to make transfers, we're prepared to do it in that manner.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Before we bring RJ up, my apologies to those who are in the back there that have earned tenure. It was not given to you. You earned it. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. RJ, could you please come up? Thank you.
Good evening. There weren't a lot of changes on the technology budget. There was some final numbers that came in for the BOSEs. And I think it's a net increase of $1,209 on the technology budget.
We do have the Changes Report after the Instructional Budget, so we can look at those, the minor changes that you can see. The majority of those will be from the BOSEs' final services coming in.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, RJ.
Nice to see everybody's faces.
Yeah, good to see you too.
At this time, I would like to invite Danielle to come on up. Joe, you have a brief update with the Instructional Budget as well, right?
Yep, that'll be a little bit later.
A little bit later, but Danielle. Danielle, I can't say enough about her work in this regard. The board remembers, you know, earlier on in the year with the search and talking about data and District Report Card was an example from my previous experiences that I felt is a very useful tool. So I got together with Joe and Danielle, and really, they deserve all the credit, especially Danielle. She has been working extremely hard, not only to pull this all together, but also in light of COVID, you know, she has just been working nonstop. And there's many, many people in our district we can say that about. But Danielle, I sincerely thank you and for taking this vision and making it a reality. And I'm going to stop talking and stop stealing your thunder. So without further ado, please.
It's exciting to hear other people excited about it. It's usually just me. But no, thank you, and thank you for the introduction, Jason. What I am here to share with you tonight is not only that we've updated the district's report card with quarter two's data, but bigger than that is that the report card is live on our district's website for viewing. So that was really the biggest update in terms of the report card I wanted to share with you this evening. So the report card can be visited by anyone at any time, right from our Beeville homepage. If you simply go to District and then under About Us, you can see the link right to the district report card. And then this is the page that opens. I would highly recommend, and I tried to mention that down here at the bottom, to put it in full-screen mode, but if that's not your preference, you can still view the report embedded right into the webpage. So I tried to just give a couple pointers for how to navigate the report as people become more familiar with viewing it. So really, the goal in this interactive report is for anyone to view our district's data with any different lens that they would like to choose based on the filters available. So this report card has really given us the opportunity to celebrate the successes of our students and staff and monitor and examine the areas that support might be needed, but ultimately to remain transparent in the work that we do each and every day. So like I mentioned, the report can be viewed right in the website by just clicking on the left or the right arrows to navigate between the pages. Or if somebody has a specific page that they really want to view, they can choose from the pop-up menu and they can go right to that page. So there's a lot of different functionality that this report provides us. But like I had mentioned before, my preference is to view it in that full-screen mode just by clicking on the Full Screen button. You can get back to the website easily by clicking the X that pops up up top or by pressing the Escape button on your keyboard. So really, tonight's overview of our Quarter Two data hasn't changed a lot from Quarter One. That is typically what we see year to year, quarter to quarter. But this page that you see in front of you continues to provide a summary of each of the different pages in the report. I will mention that the COVID-19 impact has been huge, especially during the month of January. We experienced half of our district's cases just in the month of January. So just to put that in perspective, I think is important. But I really just wanted to provide the update that it is now live and anyone is certainly able to view it as they so choose. I will just give a quick example of what we mean by interactive report. You can select any of the filters on any of the pages that have them. And you can choose by specific school building, if that's an option. On this specific instance, this is our extracurricular activities. So you can choose a specific category. But that's really up to anyone's imagination for what they would like to view when it comes to this interactivity in the report. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them tonight. But I know that there's a lot of information there. And like I said, anybody can select those filters and view the data that they'd like to.
Danielle Smith. Yeah, I got a chance to play around with this early. And it's really grabbed me that, I mean, you could stand here all day and play around and look at things. And kind of look at, you know, so for example, looking at the Raider type and the difference between a student self-report and the instructor report and the BiMS SEL and the differences there would be one example that I was looking at. But my question is, is, you know, so, and I know that you're addressing this and have been, but to just kind of talk about the next steps, like, okay, well, we know what's going on or we know some things that are kind of alerts or things that we want to look at. How does that then go to action?
When it comes to just data in general, I'm assuming you're speaking or the BiMS specifically?
No, no, just the data in general. Yeah, so just like, okay, well, now we've got some information and we've kind of digested that and made it easy to kind of see some trends in that. So taking that and implementing that into improvement is kind of what is it? And Jason and Joe, I mean, that's kind of all of you, I guess.
Absolutely. And I'll just mention, I remember over the summer we were talking about some different goals and action steps with data. And for me, the first step was to make it accessible because this has been that vision for quite some time now. And bringing it to life is certainly where, you know, the work has been. But now that that's up and running and people are able to access it, I think the next step is to really take a close look at who's accessing it in terms of what team. So as we consider what is the data that we want to be looking at or need to be looking at, who do we need to have at the table to have the conversations about it? And it might be a different team that looks at the BiMS data, that looks at the Academic Universal Screeners, or that looks at the Regions data. But that next step, after having it accessible, is who's at the table to talk about it and really come together to plan those action steps. and really come together to plan those action steps. Because Danielle, in the morning, planning the action steps isn't going to create the change for anybody.
You know, in the vision, what I've seen is data-driven, right? And it's really a catalyst for a conversation. Let's start the conversation. And Joe and I and Danielle had sat down at length and saying, well, what are the trends? What's the story that this is trying to tell? And it certainly should not be top-down, right? It should be involving all of our teachers, all of our providers, and have them read and analyze the data to say, well, what do you see? What does this mean to you? And really, it's how can we help and support? And let the data be the driver, but let our teachers and our principals tell us that, hey, here's what I'm seeing. Are you seeing the same thing? Let's get on the same page, and it's about support. It's about support and helping out. So it's truly data-driven, and I'm just over the moon excited about this. And again, it is about transparency. It's about bringing in the community, bringing the community into conversations, and parents, and saying, well, why is it this way? Oh, okay, well, now I understand it. So that's the mission and the vision that we have. And again, I'm over the moon, I'm excited about it. And I implore, you know, any staff members or any parents to call or community members to reach out if they have any questions on this. And as a disclaimer, a lot of this is already public. This is public data, and it's organizing it into a user-friendly site where you can look at it and analyze it. So Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I was just going to add that the, you know, options at this point, so each building has a building-level leadership team. So the principals will now be working with their teachers, with their leadership teams to really break down the specific information for their buildings. The same thing holds true at the secondary level with the department meetings. So whether it's a building-level department meeting or the district secondary department meetings that span all three buildings or two buildings, they'll now have this resource to dig a little bit deeper and have meaningful conversations and discussions about what are areas that we need to continue to improve, and what areas are we doing well in that ultimately can help share, you know, resources and strategies with others. And so this will play a huge role in the building-level action plans that the teams put together as they continue to do that work throughout this year and also as they prepare for next year.
And I'll add as well that although this report card is a great resource, I have been contacted by administrators, by teachers who just want to learn how to use Google Data Studio, EdCamp sessions on our upcoming PDC Day, offering four different sessions of just the basics of how to get started. So it's exciting to see how it is starting to grow already, and we're just giving the preview. So exciting things to come in Danielle's data world.
I appreciate that. Jason, I appreciate kind of what you were talking about in terms of, you know, not having this top-down, but having, you know, those that are on the front lines kind of interpreting this and deciding kind of how to move forward and providing that support. And I think the timing's really kind of excellent in terms of we're talking about the budget as a board, and that would also be looking at the data and how can the board, in terms of looking at the budget, help support improvement and creating an excellence.
I couldn't say it any better. Matt?
I know you know that I love this stuff, so I'm very excited that we've taken it to this level. But it really, to jump on that, this will make our job a lot easier, because without this, we don't really know the appropriate questions to ask. So this is going to help drive those conversations to get to the decisions, especially when it gets to the budget time as well. Jason, I just want to ask one thing. As you say, a lot of this is all public information, but some of this is not. It's more in-house stuff that we're putting out there publicly, which a lot of school districts don't do, which I really appreciate, because a lot of these things are linked to the things that we'll be talking about and decisions that we'll be making and reporting out to everyone. So, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that.
And thank you for your questions along the way, because they've been driving forces in deciding what this might look like.
Danielle, thank you. Campbell project update will just kind of be, I want to direct everybody's attention, and this will be a quick, just a real quick update. We have been working with our architects and construction managers and Sarah Buckshaw, our media specialist, and of course, Kim and Tiffany. And we're rolling out the ad campaign, if you will, for upcoming building projects. And again, if you follow the link, we have all the information on our webpage. And I think some of you have already had an opportunity to view this. So again, if there's any questions, and that goes out for the entire community, staff. And this is, you know, part of following the Funding the Future, talking about making our facilities much better, and simply trying to provide the very best for our children and our community.
So this is just kind of our initial startup. Sarah, we've been working on a proposed schedule with Sarah, so we'll be talking about that at our facilities meeting, and we'll be adding to this. So we're working on getting additional schematics up, and the more information we can put out, the better, is kind of our feeling at this point. And then, you know, we did, the Funding the Future page is still there. It's just not the focus right now until we figure out what direction we're going as a board.
Any questions? Great. So the next item that I have on my leadership report, or our leadership report, is the Baldensville Community Hall of Fame for the Performing Arts. And Chris, Mr. Denton, I may have to tap you on the shoulder on this, but I think it's fairly straightforward. I'm just going to read the summation from this particular group. The intent is they're hoping to present to us on April 4th, 2022, just doing a summation of the organization's work. So just a brief history. In the fall of 2019, a small group of community members began discussing interest in acknowledging and honoring the great accomplishments and contributions of the Baldensville community members and the fine performing arts. Members in fine and performing arts. They asked for assistance and support when they began meeting. The pandemic forced a delay in the group's collaboration, but this past summer, they have continued to move forward and are hoping to have their inaugural class of inductees sometime in the very near future. The group has formed a committee and has consulted with similar local organizations as well as an attorney to create bylaws for the nonprofit organization, the criteria by which they plan to nominate and select inductees, and are currently working on their website. They've also applied for a non-for-profit incorporation with New York State to help support, fund the endeavor. The mission statement is as follows. The purpose of the Baldens Community Hall of Fame for Visual and Performing Arts is to recognize and celebrate those individuals whose talent, expertise, and dedication have enhanced the cultural landscape of the Baldensville Central School District and the community of Baldensville. We would like to give the people of Baldensville an opportunity to remind us of those special people who have been the backbone of our cultural heritage, perhaps through participating in art, music, theater, dance, or through their mentoring. So that's really the crux and the overall summation of this group. And again, they're looking to present on April 4th, 2022. Mr. Denton, is that a good summation?
I wrote that, so it sounds good to me.
And I was hoping you would say that. Of course, you think that's brilliant.
It sounds great.
That was great.
It's an excellent, I mean, it's a great opportunity to highlight. Do you want me to come up?
Yeah, so the people at home can hear you.
Briefly, Mr. Denton, briefly.
Yes, I'll do my best.
Okay. So I think it's an outstanding opportunity for us to recognize, just as was stated there, all the accomplishments of some of the really successful alumni that have made an impact in the community and beyond. I think it helps us also to start thinking about how we kickstart, you know, a revival of that with our Athletic Hall of Fame. And I know that we're in the process of doing some research to see what other districts are doing with regards to honoring, you know, outstanding alumni in all kinds of different fields, including math and science and medicine. I think there's a lot of benefit to our current students to be able to share the stories of these alumni. So we're very excited about it, and I know that the board members for the Community Hall of Fame are excited to come and present to you on the 4th.
Thank you, Chris. That was also very well done. The next item I have falls under Kim Vio. Please, the legal notice, annual vote, please.
Yes, so we are working with legal counsel right now to bring you a final draft of what all the propositions will look like. Just as a brief reminder, I'm hoping to put that in some communication this week, so you have a chance to look at it before the next meeting. There will be a lot on there. It has to do with our publications in addition to the propositions. So just to recap again, we have the budget proposition. We have the student transport vehicle proposition, the capital project, funding the capital reserve, which we have talked about, the land acquisition, which will allow us to separate the bus traffic from the parent traffic at McNamara, and then the Board of Education candidates, of course. So we have a lot going on the propositions this year, so I just want to keep kind of discussing that, bringing that up. And like I said, we will get that final draft out too as soon as I have legal vet it and make sure we're in good shape for that, hopefully starting this Friday. And then we'll be asking for action on that at our next meeting so that we're hitting our deadlines to get it out to the publications that we need to get it out to. Any questions?
Next up is the creation of the school bus dispatcher position. Kim, please, and thank you.
So one of the things that we have continued to talk to the board about is our transportation situation in regards to drivers and making sure that we can transport students to and from school on a daily basis. I think everyone's aware that there is a driver shortage nationally. Knock on wood, we have been able to maintain everything that we needed to do thus far. And when we look at coming to the board to discuss replacing any of the positions, we're rethinking that as we move forward. So we have a clerical position. It was actually, I think, it wasn't a clerical, but along those lines. The position that we moved a person out of into a transportation analyst, and we never backfilled. So right now, we are down a clerical person in that office. The issue is if we actually refilled that with a clerical position, there's no way we can have them drive a bus, because the credentials through civil service don't line up. So what we're actually proposing is that we reclass that to another dispatcher, and they would do some of those clerical tasks, but it would give us another person to be able to drive. So we're not actually increasing any staff in the office. We are just kind of changing those titles around so that we have the ability to let those people drive. If there's any questions, I can answer those as well. But really, we have switched the duties around. And if we keep in mind too, as we've been doing this, those people aren't in their office jobs that they're really supposed to be doing any of their entire shift, because they're out driving a bus the majority of the time. So we think that this is a better solution. Obviously, we do get the transportation aid on it, but it does give us another person that can get behind the wheel if we need to. And that still leaves us two people back in the office that cannot drive a bus on a regular basis when everyone is present. We still do have the mechanics driving as well. So that would be something that we would like to bring forward at the next meeting so that we can start, well, we can start advertising, but then we need to create that position and abolish the clerical position.
Kim, my apologies, I jumped over number five, so. Sorry.
Are there any questions about that, considering the dispatcher position, before I go back? And I'm sorry, I just didn't pay attention either. I listened.
No, I just want to say thank you for thinking outside the box to fill all the needs that we have right now, getting creative.
Yeah, I think we really have to. We've brought on a couple new drivers. You see the appointments, but, you know, I don't think we're ever going to be overstuffed when it comes to drivers. We still have vacant positions. We're still, you know, we're fortunate, because we have been creative, and we're fortunate the board has been very supportive in allowing us to do that with backfilling some of these and doing some unconventional things to try to help out with that. So thank you, and Transportation Department truly thanks you too and realize that you've been very supportive. So going back.
I had a quick question.
Sure.
What's the overall impact to the proposed transportation budget on that change? Or is that already baked into the numbers we saw?
Well, we would already have, I think, one of those positions in there. And again, we can move fund balance for the final budget to account for that. So it would be another salary position, another salary of a dispatcher and benefits.
So presumably?
It would just be the difference between the salary of a clerical versus a...
Technically, yes. So the salary difference is probably fifteen, fifteen thousand?
So an additional fifteen thousand?
Yeah, yeah, from a salary position. But remember, we get aid back on those positions too, so that does...
So we'll see that in the delta file, won't it?
Down the road. You get the aid back the following year. Not today.
We see the file that has the delta from what was presented versus what we're going with. We'll see that.
Once it hits the change report, yes. It won't be on for tonight, obviously.
The final one that we see.
Yeah, yeah. And, well, I can either talk about it here with the revenue and fund balance or in the change report. We've actually kind of narrowed in on a budget number, because we do have more fund balance built in for next year. So you won't see our overall budget number change very much going forward, even if we make changes like with the instructional tonight. But what we're doing is we're reducing fund balance out of other lines, because we've been able to build in more fund balance for next year than we even built in for this year, based on the grants that we have that we're using those funds as well. So we're trying to stay just under that 4% budget-to-budget increase from this year to next year, if that makes sense. So going into kind of the revenue projection sheet, we can take a look at that one first. You know, we're trying to project out where we think we're going to be as the year ends. We are looking like we are in a good position with our overall fund balance and our revenues. So we'll continue to update this. These are projections. We're not done spending. We did implement a spending freeze, but there are still some things that come up. Anything that's instructional-related and/or related to safety and security, obviously, we're still approving those items in this year's budget. You may hear, there used to be a wish list that was created, which caused some other issues in regards to closing out our books at the end of the year, because obviously, especially right now with the supply chain, it takes us a long time to get certain things. And then we're carrying over all of those encumbrances into the next year and having to close a lot of stuff out for the future year. So when you take a look at this here, we are still projecting that we're pretty close. If you look at our total revenue, state aid, tax levy miscellaneous, we are still pretty darn close to what our projection was for all the revenues, new revenues we're bringing in, before we take a look at what we appropriated in the reserves. And just kind of a sneak peek going into next year, the way our budget is looking right now with our revenues, we don't have them all reconciled yet, but it's certainly looking like that appropriated fund balance and the reserve allocation will be reduced next year to balance our budget, which helps us out as well. And when we look at the fund balance memo, we changed this a little bit. There's a last line up in the paragraph. We were actually looking, when we were giving this document to the board previously, we were strictly looking at one year, this year only. We weren't accounting for the fact that we had fund balance from previous years built into that that impacts our 4% at the end of the year. So we are starting to project that now that we're in January. And when you take a look at that, it does look like we will have fund balance to be able to start funding, hopefully, the capital reserve that we create this year so that we can continue to take care of our infrastructure going forward.
Questions for Kim? Questions for Kim? Kim, thank you.
Next is me, Ray.
Joe, you're up. Yeah, you're up.
For the instructional budget. So the good news is, for the first time in the last two, three years, we haven't had to make any reductions to close a budget gap when it came to the instructional budget portion of our annual budget. And so what you see here, just a quick overview, contractual raises based on the salary lines here. What I would like to point out where there are some additions, so when you think about the instructional staff for the 2021, '22 school year, the current school year, all the positions that are in this year's budget or have been added since this budget was created are in this proposed instructional budget. In addition to that, we are proposing three additional positions, one being an additional math teacher at the secondary level to help support academic intervention services for students. Part of that will be funded through the American Rescue Fund plans, funding. And then the two other positions that we're proposing being added are to help with the social, emotional learning of students, specifically at the elementary level. We're looking to add two school counselors. As you recall, in last year's school budget, we added a school counselor, maybe it was the year before, I can't, it was last year's budget. We added a school counselor at the elementary level. We are in the process of recommending or proposing that we add two more with the intent of the following budget, the 2023, '24 budget. So next year, we'd be proposing two additional counselors, so there would be a counselor in each of the elementary schools in addition to the social worker and the school psychologist within those buildings. So that's where you see any major change in the instructional budget when it comes to salaries for what we're proposing.
Joe, if I just may add to that too, you know, I just returned from my NISCAS conference, and that was one of the most discussed topics at this conference was the mental health and the impact of COVID that's been taking a toll on our students and our staff members over the past few years. And I also like to point out too that, speaking with Joe with about the addition of the counselors, this was strategic. Again, going back to talking about data, we met with all of the five elementary principals, Tony, and discussed, how can we help? What do you need for supports? And we broke down the data of RTI, student discipline, the number of resources, TAs, teachers, student ratio, free and reduced rent lunch ratio, a lot of data. And we, as a leadership group, looked at it and we analyzed and saw what we thought was what would be the answer, if you will. But we then brought it into the principals, and the principals brought it back to the teachers. So this is truly data-driven of providing resources. And it also ties in to the two buildings that were on the DECEP, that are currently on the DECEP. And I remember earlier on, several board meetings ago, talking about, you know, what is the plan? So that plan has been active and we've been, you know, building up to this point. And certainly Joe can jump in and add more of what we've been doing with SEL, with DEI. There's an awful lot of moving parts that have been occurring right along. But again, this is more of a long-term plan. And again, to Joe's point, you know, this is what we're looking for for this year, but we have a strategic plan moving forward. And again, it's about providing support and going back to what Danielle presented, you know, what can we do as a group to support? That's why we're here. So again, I'll cut myself off because I could just keep rambling. But Joe, please, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry. I don't want to hold things up, but I think I remember it was three or four years ago where we were also required by the state to provide those guidance resources at the elementary level, so this is also a response to that, correct?
Correct, yep. So above and beyond the social, emotional learning support, just career development component that we are required to have at that elementary level. And as you recall, the person that's currently in that position this year is spending one day a week in each of the elementary schools. So by the addition of these two counselors, we're going to be looking at the support, which buildings will, whether they're, you know, one person, more time in each building, or we offset that support with those that have the chromosome specialists. That we're still working on. We just know that ultimately, the hiring of two additional people will help support the social, emotional learning and that career component that we have to address at that level. When it comes to equipment, you'll see that there is an increase of just under $50,000 increase. Most of that is at some of the secondary level for equipment in the technology, in the fine arts areas where there are significant costs to replacing a specialized printer that will print 3D and/or kilns and other high-cost, what I would consider to be high-cost items. There's also some equipment there for video and radio, as well as equipment for the marching band and music. There's some proposed increases there. Looking specifically at the contractual, we're pretty flat here, just a $16,000 increase overall. The building administrators have worked to try to maintain and are comfortable with those levels. Where you see a larger increase, and it looks like a larger increase of about $62,000 is in the area of materials and supplies, but what I want to point out is that that actually is returning us to the 2020, '21 level of materials and supply funding. As you recall, in last year's budget, those of you that were here, it was before the American Rescue funding supplemented the district budget, we were charged with going back to the administration and asking for them to fine tune and reduce in some areas, and that is an area that they chose to make some reductions. And so given the proposal this year, we're actually back to the 2021 funding level, which we're comfortable with. And we also have the ability to purchase materials and supplies and some other resources through the American Rescue Funds if needed. So certainly, our staff isn't going without in this recommended budget. And then last but not least, you see about $113,000 increase in the BOSI's codes. And what I would like to point out in those areas is that we are maintaining, if not increasing, seats based on student interest. So our CTE requests have gone up from 99.75 to 104 seats. Career development is at 7.25. New visions is increased by two. Innovation taxes remain the same. Stars, same. Reach and futures programs are the same, again, all based on student needs. And as requests come forward in the '22, '23 school year, we do have the ability with the additional fund balance built into the codes to make sure that students are getting access to those programs as needed. So overall, you see an increase in the instructional budget of, I believe, just around 1.4 and a half, four or five million overall, which is consistent to the typical increase from prior years. So I would open it up for any questions, if you have questions at this time.
Joe, I'm going to go back to the additional counselors. So for this budget, there's two, and then next year, you said potential two more?
Yeah, we're proposing ultimately this year, we have a desire for four, right? And so we're looking at two in this year's budget, and then we'll supplement in the proposal for the '23, '24 budget, two additional.
So those four would all fall under the American Rescue Funds?
So we're building them into the budget. So you'll see there's actually a budget line here, but we are going to utilize American Rescue Fund monies for that, but we're showing it here. So essentially, that's going to hopefully generate some additional fund balance that the board will have the discretion at the end of the school year to utilize. If we didn't start to show that increase now, then when the American Rescue Funds are exhausted, we would have to consider a significant increase. And so we're trying to be strategic about how we plan this out so that ultimately, it's in future budgets to stay.
Quick question on the line item called Performing Arts Oswego. Sorry if I missed your explanation. What is that one again?
Performing Arts Oswego, that's arts and ed. So we contract with Oswego County BOSIs. They offer the arts and ed program, so we get reimbursed for trips, typically performances if students go on a field trip. And we have increased that over the last couple of years. We've continued to increase that. Usually, there's support with the PTAs, but we've shifted, we feel that we should be the ones not necessarily relying on the PTAs. So they're using their funding for other things because we subscribe to that service.
We go through Oswego BOSIs because OCM doesn't offer that, or...
There are certain BOSIs within the JTM. That's the terminology, Joint Management Team or JMT. And so they, because Oswego County is the one that houses that, OCM BOSIs can't offer that service. So they're strategic to not duplicate services. So we cross-contract with them. So again, I guess the highlights, this is ultimately about maintaining and/or continuing to offer all of the things that we have been known to offer for our students, and we're trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way.
Thank you, Joe.
Pull up the change report for Kim. This is going to highlight, there's not a, there's a lot, but overall, I think you'll see it's actually a reduction.
Right, and to Joe's point too, we've talked a lot, Tiffany and I have been talking a lot about making sure that we're looking long-term because we do have, our resources seem like we're in a good place right now. But when you start looking out two or three years, and Joe alluded to this, is once our Rescue Fund monies are gone from the grants, we need to make sure that we have positioned ourselves, hopefully, to be able to maintain what we're adding into the budget and to be able to sustain that. So just to give you an idea of what we mean by that, one of the big picture things that Tiffany did was she took a look at all of our salaries, and then we took a look at a 2% increase on our tax levy. If we were, so if we had those two hypothetical scenarios, our tax levy does not cover just our salary increases in this district. So when it seems like we have all of this money flowing right now, we need to be very intelligent and strategic in regards to setting ourselves up for that longer whole picture because once the foundation aid, we have the increase in foundation aid coming for next year and the year after that. But we don't know what's going to happen after that. And those are some large chunks of foundation aid coming into this district that have been due to the district for very, very long. So we're just trying to be smart about it to make sure that we set ourselves up for the long term, if that makes sense. And so with the change report, you'll notice anything that has that, like 490, you see the 1310, and then you see 490, and you'll notice in this report, almost all of those have a 490 in them. And that is because those are all BOSIs related. So as we were talking about, we did get those final requests from BOSIs, and we were projecting, you know, a 3% increase in BOSIs. Sometimes it came in, sometimes it didn't, sometimes it was higher. So that's what all of these are related to, just in all of the different function areas as you look down through here. The other ones, you'll see there's a lot in the special ed area, of course, because we utilize a lot of services through BOSIs with the special ed area, the best special ed services. If you take a look down farther, when you get to the bottom, those are the ones we were talking about before when our workers' comp bill came through and the adjustments that we've made with our medical insurance. And you'll see this more when we're moving fund balance around, if we need to adjust, make adjustments in the future. This change report probably will be longer than what we've seen, you know, before because of the way we're changing things around this year. Any questions? So before I say that, at the next meeting, we plan to have the revenue, hopefully, we'll have the revenues, at least a sneak peek of that. We may not have the finals, but at least we'll have a sneak peek of what we're looking at with the revenues, especially because we're able to reduce the appropriated fund balance in the reserves, so people have a chance to kind of take a look and digest that.
Thank you, Joe and Kim. Does anyone have any other questions for the cabinet? Jason? Okay. Next, moving on to item E, we have a first reading for some policies. Does anyone have any questions?
I had a couple of questions on 8330.
Okay.
Maybe just for the group here, the maybe the policy committee just kind of give us a quick summary of the changes.
So what we did, we used to have a controversial issues policy a long time ago. We had a, discovered we had a regulation for it, but no policy got lost amongst some changes. So we went to different school districts, Jason reached out, and we got some sample policies. So what we did is we merged two together. So what you see, the red at the bottom is the controversial issues component of that. The rest of it is the same. We just put it all into one policy. And then Jase, or Lieutenant Thompson, and his team will go and make some, come up with their administrative regulations and bring that back to the policy committee.
We actually have the regulation ready to go to the policy committee at that upcoming meeting. So we were waiting to see how the discussion went today before we sent that out.
Not to be facetious, but how is a controversial issue defined?
That would probably depend on the person who has an issue with anything that's being given instructionally in the school. If they have an issue with it and consider it deemed controversial, I guess it's controversial, and we look into it and follow our regulations.
Is there a standard definition? I mean, just for clarity of the policy, is there a standard definition of controversial issue, or...
So when we, when we looked at the different policies from neighboring districts, there were some that were kind of very broad, like this one, and there were some that went pretty in-depth, and they had like definition, philosophy, you know, different components to that policy. What we decided as a policy committee was to kind of keep it this way, and then the regulations would have the more in-depth information. And we talked about like, what is the goal of this policy? And so a lot of those buzzwords that came up in the meeting are going to be reflected in the regulation. I don't know if that answers your question. So it's kind of different depending on what district, and this is kind of what the cabinet and Jason, what we kind of came to.
So what we're moving to, or what this represents is, anything taught in any classroom in the school can be controversial if somebody disagrees with it.
I think we'll soon, we'll learn more once we see the administrative regulations and how that would be sorted out from the day-to-day and the classroom operations. Our goal was to keep it as broad as possible because that's what the board's, well, has kind of set that direction. The last thing we want to do is have a policy that's so detailed that it ties the hands. We just provide the direction to hopefully get to something that's measurable, and it works the way, you know, we'd like to see that happen.
No, that's fine. I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we kind of got a rationale behind it.
And I think too, on top of that, and I think that would be reflected in the regulation, is that chain of command, like speaking to the teacher first and then going to the administrator and so on. So hopefully, it would be resolved at that level before it went, you know, anywhere else.
And then you would see, if you remember from last year, you know, even with the books, we got a sample of what the form is and the process. we got a sample of what the form is and the process that a community member went through before it actually got to the Board, the whole committee, community committee and staff together reviewing the book. Or it may not even be a book, it may be something else. And there's a lot of things that must fall underneath this or that could.
Jason, when that, when those regulations will be done or?
We've been actively working on them currently, Joe and myself and the team. And, you know, it's really, as soon as this is adopted, we can bring that forth to the Policy Committee for their review and approval. But as far as changes, maybe, maybe you're getting to the question of changes, Jeff, but nothing will take it.
We don't change, we don't approve regulations.
No, but this will be part of it, to be able to share exactly what the regulations look like.
Well, you said to bring to the Policy Committee for review and approval. I don't think we, we don't approve.
I misspoke, not approval, but for review.
I can help with that. I think what Jason is getting at, or Superintendent Thompson's getting at, sorry, is depending upon how they craft or draft those administrative regulations, we may think, maybe we should adjust the policy a little more before it comes, you know, back to the committee or for the full Board. So, it's just everyone communicating and understanding all the different layers to get to the desired outcome or goal that we're trying to achieve.
And I just had one other question. I noticed on the original policy stayed all the same except for one word. Just wondering if the Policy Committee could give a little background of changing the word religious to philosophical?
It covers more, and we have a specific policy for religious. And that's how we kind of got lost, our policy got lost with the regulation and that's how we got to where we are now with this one.
By using philosophical, it's more encompass, it's broader. So, it's just not restricted to religion.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Moving on to new business, resolved that the Board of Education approved a trip request for the girls softball team to travel and participate in a softball spring trip to Ripken Experience, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, April 9th through 13th, 2022 pursuant to be attached. Can I motion please? Jeff first. Tony second. Any questions for discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Item B, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Barrow City Boys Cross Team to travel and participate in a non-league game versus Boston Spa, April 1st through 2nd, 2022, Boston Spa High School in Boston, Boston Spa, New York pursuant to be attached. Can I motion please? Shelley first. Jeff second. Any questions? You guys are challenging me tonight. All in favor? Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Item C, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Boston Central School District Annual School Calendar for 2022, 2023 pursuant to be attached. Can I motion please? Jeff first. Second, Matt. Any questions?
This is pretty consistent with the BOCs calendar.
Yes, we have the same conference days as the other schools in the region. There's a few.
All in favor? Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Item D, resolved that the Board of Education approved a new ECA Club account for the Avery Travel and World Language Club pursuant to be attached. Can I motion please? Ryan first. Second, Matt. Any questions or discussion?
I do have a question. The, so I think this is, this is a great opportunity for students. I hope they get a lot of participation. The request for a stipend goes through a different process, is that correct? So, that would go through the concession for an extra duty assignment kind of thing.
And that would be through, actually, the association. They'd have to go to their association because it's language within a contract for the teachers.
So, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't get lost between the grabs from the letter and they can go through the correct process, see that that approved.
Any other questions? All in favor? Pass is nine zero. Item E, resolved that the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus instructional materials pursuant to be attached. Can I motion please? Ryan first. Second, Jeff. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Pass is nine zero. We're now to the Board Roundtable portion of the agenda. Does anyone have anything for this evening?
I actually do. On the, in the Friday letter, Jason, we got a, was this a report saying that with significant disproportionality by race and ethnicity in disciplinary actions for students with disabilities? Said that we are being notified that we are, where did it go? That black students with disabilities are being suspended at a higher rate than other demographics.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's based upon the 2021 data. So, you know, currently, that's part of the DEI work. It's really, you know, it's a subgroup of unique learners and people of color. And so, really, what we want to do is take a look at why that's occurring, how can we provide strategies to help not only that, that particular population or subgroups? Really, how do we help everyone? But that, that's an area that we've been identified in, and that will be ongoing work.
Okay, I get, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
My question on it though is that, if I read this right, does it say you have to be on three years?
Yes, three years.
So?
This is, this is, this is the first year that we'll have an opportunity to take a look at that, that specific subgroup or subgroups.
So, did I read it wrong? I thought it said that you have to be below for three years to get on the list. Did I read that wrong? I mean, they have to be above the suspension number for three years to actually get on the list. I might have read that wrong. I apologize.
If, if, if we're on for three years, we will have to reallocate funding that they provide us for specific things, like we will be told how we're going to have to use that funding. So, the goal is to not be on the list for three years.
To be proactive.
Right, so, we've been monitoring, and we've actually, even though, you know, we've been having a lot of discussions as a district leadership team, and that which is funneled down through building-level leadership teams and the DEI Committee, and just looking at disproportionality with a lot of areas. So, when you think about like equity-focused leadership. And so, this is not something that's of a surprise. And, you know, we've been slowly working on, to Jason's point, how do we give students other skills and strategies so that it doesn't get to a point where, you know, we're, you know, having to suspend from school or impose certain consequences? So, it's working and it's also providing professional development and support for staff to better understand and recognize how to support students that maybe are struggling with something that is, you know, creating some conflict within the school.
And truly, that's, I'm sorry, Matt. And truly, that's why it's so important, the DEI work. You know, it's, it's not just one specific group or a specific subgroup. This is why it's, we want to take care of all of our children. And this is kind of a heads up that this is an area that we need improvement on. I'm, I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to correct, and I know, and I believe you didn't mean to, you know, the correction would be, you know, not that we want to get off, the goal is to get off the list. The goal is to never get on the list and begin with. So, I, I.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I, and I, and I believe that. I just wanted to kind of real, it, it makes a difference in terms of how that's worded, I believe. So, but it, and it shouldn't just be this, you know, DEI Committee that kind of sits off the side. This should be part of the inner workings of the entire district, not just a subcommittee to kind of focus on.
So, can you just explain the process a little bit, how it works in the state? They identify the first year, and you guys are given notice? Or how, how does that work and how does it get to the Board before we know that we're, like, have to make changes?
Well, we were just notified that this is, this is a potential area that we need to address. And so, again, they'll do a data analysis along with us. Like Joe said, we're going to do a lot of professional development and work in this, in this regard.
Maybe I didn't ask that right. Do we get like a notice, like, the first time they see a big difference between particular subjects? Do you guys just get like a letter from the state or how does that?
They will notify us. Go ahead.
This is our notification.
Right.
This is the first, and it indicates that, you know, they're monitoring for, you know, if they receive and they see a disproportionality for one or two years, you're going to get the notification. And then, we have to make sure that we're not, that we're addressing the issue and there should be, there should be an adjustment to the data that, you know, moving forward. So, we're hoping that we're addressing the issue.
The, now, it just came to mind as well. This may not have been monitored in past years because we may not have had 30 students in that subcategory. So, you know, it doesn't mean that it hasn't happened before. It just means that it wasn't, we didn't hit the number to, to trigger.
To qualify it, right. You're absolutely right, Matt.
We, to clarify though, but we have had more than 30 students of color, label as having a disability. So, that had, you're right, but that isn't our scenario.
Okay, no, yeah, I appreciate that clarification and that's good. I had, I had one thing that I wanted to say. You know, I appreciate the district sending out a letter acknowledging that there's a large Ukrainian population here in central New York, and that we may have some students and some families personally affected by the violence overseas. So, you know, I appreciate that, seeing that letter come out. I appreciate the district taking action to, to support those students who may be personally affected.
I just wanted to mention that I was on the website today, specifically on the Board of Ed's candidates page. Definitely needs some updating. I sent an email. We need the new date of the elections and also the number of signatures that each candidate will need to get for their petition. And we'll also have another announcement once that's updated for the community to know that everything's ready and the packet, or the packets ready? The packets are ready now. Okay, so they're ready for everybody. Okay. So, anyone who's interested, they can call the district office to get those.
I just wanted to bring up real quick, I've talked about in the past. We've done the facility visits or tours of the buildings. And I've requested in the past that if we could go to the buildings during the day to see great things that the teachers and students are doing throughout the day. And I just wanted to bring that back up. I know, I was just doing some research and we as Board members for the Code of Conduct and we have Board policy, we can attend, we can request to go into those visits during the day. So, I'm just asking everyone what their thoughts are on it and the process to build out making that happen.
I can tell you that it was very helpful my first two years on the Board. I was disappointed to see that disappear. It's nice to get in there and show some support to the building leaders and the staff and seeing, you know, what the kids are doing and seeing some of the things that we're hearing about, actually, you know, even simple things like the projects on the walls and just the excitement of the kids. You know, I've been there during lunch before, you know, PE class, you know, when someone's doing a presentation. We've been in there before with students, actually, who were prepared to have questions with the Board members. A lot of different things, and I would love to see that come back. And yeah, it is, and it's one of the expectations in the Code of Conduct for Board of Ed members. It's, it's encouraged to get to know the students, the teachers, the building, the leaders, everyone, yeah.
I don't at all disagree that it's, I've been in the school district during the day and it's a good thing to learn about seeing actual things going on. I just, you know, in my reply to the original email, just that Jason, you know, can coordinate when it's least impactful to the school day for whatever schools we go into. And that, I would say, in my opinion, Jason can coordinate all that. But that we do have to remember too, that us coming into a school building does at least minimally disrupt the day for that school. So, you always got to keep that in mind, you know. I see it at work when, you know, VIPs come in, things change for the day. We do a little extra and it does impact the, the flow of the day. So, not saying that it's not a good idea, just, you know, maybe Jason can help us navigate what is the least impactful to a specific school. You know, us asking a school to go in there, they can't really say no, right, because we're the Board. But I think if, maybe Jason, you could help find good times, good, you know, is morning better than later in the afternoon? Is lunchtime better? You know, I don't know, but finding out when it's least impactful to the schools that we would go to would be my, would be my suggestion.
And, you know, again, full Board, please weigh in. I'm more than happy to reach out to our staff and get their thoughts and their feelings of what, what times would work best. So, if you could just give me a little bit of time, I'll certainly do that.
Yeah, I think that was traditionally been how it's done. You know, they, in the past, the building leader was contacted as to the best time for visitors to come in. And we didn't do all the buildings in one day. You may want to coordinate it with, you know, a day that you're already scheduled to be there. So, you don't have to, you know, go back in additional time for us to make it more efficient for you as well.
Does anyone have anything else? Oh, actually, you know what? Sorry, Ryan. We have, we're going to be having the meeting with the Cabinet and the BTA, and we can only have four Board members there, so we're not breaking the open meeting laws and have, holding a meeting. And there were five people who signed up for Monday, and it's at 3:00. And we need to determine amongst ourselves who the four representatives are going to be for the Board that day. It was, let's see, Denise, Jeff, Joan, me, and Frank. So, I did have an email correspondence with Beth Chatney, and how they're looking at it is Beth's not going to be able to attend the first meeting. So, Jason Glasshouse will be there. And what they're thinking about possibly doing is flip-flopping back and forth between the President and Vice President being there if we decide to continue doing these quarterly and then filling it in with other people. I mean, we could do the same thing or people have other ideas.
So, you have, you said there's five. Okay, so, been there, done that, so I'm going to pull out so let you four go as long as we're doing a rotating basis anyway. I don't think any of them have ever experienced an informal discussion with the BTA. I have numerous times, so.
I appreciate that, Joan, and the way you're thinking about that because I think it'll be beneficial for a lot of new people, including myself. I've never had one myself at the sit-down, so thank you. So, I'll send the names over to Beth. I told her I'd do that once we decided. Thank you, Ryan, for reminding me.
Jen, or Ryan, is there an agenda that's going to take place or is it just, I mean, I know it's informal.
That's a great question, Kelly. And my, my vision was to just have a very informal, so no agenda. Sit down and just talk about what are the goals? And the goals are to communicate and support. Yeah, at, at least to start, yeah, that's a good point, right. But really, the initial meeting will be. But really the initial meeting will be very wide open and a lot of listening and trying to figure out where we want to go together.
We all set? Thank you, Brian, for reminding me. Okay.
That's what I'm here for.
You're here for more than that, but I definitely need that. Thank you. Resolve that the March 7, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting be adjourned. Can I have a motion, please? Joan first. Second Frank. All in favor? Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.